Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag. Salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community of different backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. Yet one common goal, that is a betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. And in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Fitzgerald, Councilmember Joe Garcia, Councilmember Christian Garcia, Deputy Mayor Martinez and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order. We'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Present.
Councilmember Joe Garcia.
Present.
Councilman Christian Garcia.
Here.
And Deputy Mayor Martinez.
Present.
And I, Mayor White, am present as well. We'll move on to our proclamations and I'd like to invite anybody from Public Works up to meet me at the dais for National Public Works Week. Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Escondido. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our transportation, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens in the city of Escondido to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective community. Now therefore, I, Dane M. White, Mayor of the city of Escondido, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. And I urge all citizens to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals for the substantial contributions they make in advancing the quality of life for all. Thank you all.
I'd like to thank Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez and the city council members for declaring this week as Public Works Week. My name is Chris Muller and I'm a supervisor in the Water Distribution Division. And joining me tonight to accept this proclamation are the 2025 Public Works Employees of the Year, representing the city's finest in the fields of fleet services, facilities, streets, lakes and parks maintenance. We appreciate the city council recognizing the hardworking men and women of the Public Works Department that are committed to serving the community. Whether it is responding to public emergencies or maintaining critical city infrastructure, we're grateful to accept this proclamation and proud to serve the residents of the city of Escondido. Thank you.
City Council, want to come down for the photo, please? This is for you, by the way. Thank you.
And next will be the water poster contest award winners.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kim Silva. With me today is Emma Patross and Alex Christie. We're the Environmental Programs Section of the Utilities Department. We're super excited to be here once again with all of you to celebrate our fourth grade poster contest. This is the 33rd year of this poster contest and we're thankful for the continued support. The contest theme is Love Water, Save Water. We saw posters on pollution prevention and how to use water efficiently. Emma presented to numerous fourth grade classrooms in Escondido, teaching students how water is a precious resource and invited them to draw about what they learned. City staff helped choose the top 12 winners that will be honored today from nearly 100 entries. Posters were judged on artistic skill, creativity and representation of the theme, Love Water, Save Water. Today, we are recognizing our 12 winners who will be displayed at City Hall, the library, the East Valley Community Center, and posters will also be posted on our city's webpage under Environmental Programs and shared through the city's social media platforms. The top three winners will be announced today will be featured in the 2026 Water Awareness Calendar along with the other winners from North County. We want to take this opportunity to thank our generous sponsors who donated prizes for this contest. A big thank you to them. But before we announce our winners, I want to remind everyone of the resources that the city offers to its residents. For example, we offer virtual and in-person landscape workshops that provide homeowners with the tools for creating sustainable landscapes. There are also rebates for rain barrels, clothes washers, sprinkler nozzles, and up to $3 a square foot for removing your grass and installing a sustainable landscape. We also offer free mulch and compost. There's going to be a compost workshop on June 14th if you're interested. You can find more information by talking with any of us or on the city's websites. So now, we are ready to start announcing our winners. Students, when Emma calls your name, please come up to receive your certificate and shake the mayor's hand and receive your prizes. Teachers, if you are here, please also come up with your students. We have a small gift as a token of our appreciation for your continued support in welcoming us into your classrooms and spreading our message. Students and teachers, you'll remain up at the front for a group photo. And then at the very end, parents, you can come up for a few group photos and then we'll make our way outside where we have a wonderful reception planned for all of you. BJ's and Jersey Mike's has generously catered that event for us. So if you can sneak out, if you can sneak out, sure. So let's, let's get started. Emma, come on up. All right, first up, we have Pakivza Navi.
Is that better? Congratulations.
All right, Natalie Morales Anaya. Matthew Rios Perez. Lila Monichere. Michael Harmon. Ava Barclay. Bailey Sarno. Ethan Blades. Landon Hickman. And now for our top three. In third place, Haley Hohn, who's not able to be with us today. Second place, Sitlali Gutierrez. And in first place, Milan Galliano. Congratulations again to our 2025 poster contest winners.
All right, moving on to, do we have a report out of closed session tonight?
No report.
And non-agenda public comments?
Yes, we have one. Tracy. Tracy, you're welcome to come forward to speak at this time. Let me bring you a microphone. One sec.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tracy Baxter. I live at 715 North Broadway in Escondido, California. I am having major issues with homeless hoarding the streets, sleeping on the streets, refusing to move from me when I try to get by. They tell me, go to hell, walk on the street. This is getting ridiculous. And Mr. Mayor, you should be ashamed of yourself going on the news in public saying that the homeless rate is down. It is not down and interfaith doesn't help because they do not have a shelter.
Were there any other comments?
None.
All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Tonight, items one through seven are on consent. I would ask for a motion to move items one through seven. Have a motion.
Second.
Second, please vote.
Voting is open. Motion approved 5-0.
Okay, on to item eight, which is fiscal year 2025, 26th Operating Budget Briefing. Thank you, Jessica. Yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Christina Holmes. I'm the Director of Finance.
I said Jessica. I meant Christina.
For the record, Christina Holmes.
So, so before Christina starts, I'm going to take a little bit of the bullet for the team. You are about to experience a slide deck that is approaching 100 slides. But this is a significant moment in the history of the city. Last year at about this time, you will see in the beginning of the presentation, we were in a very dire set of circumstances. Thankfully, last November, the voters entrusted the city, trusted us and gave us an opportunity to think about the future. It doesn't alleviate all the issues that are ongoing, but it does certainly change us into a much more optimistic and, and very, very attainable future where we're going to have much more service delivery, better customer service and help people realize their dreams in the city of Escondido. But we need to have the context and we need to start to have series of conversations about what we do with that investment. Tonight is the beginning of that conversation. You're going to hear things about the difference between a general tax and a specific tax. There's a reason for that. We, we are going to have to learn together and as I told council when we had the retreat earlier this year, that we're going to need more retreats. And one of them is going to be about how we handle Measure I, but also the question that council raised in that meeting about how we develop our brand and our identity more specifically. So coming next fiscal year, in either in the late summer or early fall, is going to be that retreat and some of those important conversations. We did our best to shape the budget to that conversation that you had with us back in March. And I will now turn it over to Christina to take you through what I promise you will never have to sit through again. Well, maybe I shouldn't promise, a nearly 100 slide deck.
Thank you. So this slide shows the general layout of the presentation. We're going to begin with a look at the historical general fund operating budget, followed by the steps the city's taken to address the general fund budget deficit. We'll review the Measure I local district tax, Measure I investments, followed by the fiscal year 2026 general fund operating budget and fiscal year 2026 general fund revenue projections. So to begin reviewing the last several years of the general fund operating budget, the city's been dealing with a general fund structural budget deficit for many years. Operating revenue in the blue trend line is not keeping pace compared to the growing cost of municipal services. In order to maintain city services, annual general fund budget deficits are projected to exceed $10 million annually, growing to $24 million by fiscal year 2035. This forecast assumes continued moderate growth in revenue. No economic recession or retraction is included. For the expenses, the model includes the funds needed to maintain city services. The model does not provide funding for new capital projects or to expand or provide new services. Leading up to fiscal year 2024, the city had taken several steps to address the general fund structural deficit. This include decreased spending was accomplished by reducing city staff by over 106 employees from 2008 to 2022 as the city's population grew by more than 10%. Controlling pension and employee benefit costs by transferring the responsibility to employees to fund a larger portion of the total costs and deferring maintenance on the city's parks, playgrounds, libraries, recreation centers, pools, street sidewalks, bridges, storm drains, fleet and other city facilities. Two years ago, in fiscal year 2024, the general fund budget started with an $11.3 million budget deficit. The table on the left shows the steps that staff took to close that general fund budget deficit. Available fund balance from internal service funds were used. Vehicle purchases and equipment replacements were deferred and one-time sources of funds were used to close the budget gap and continue to provide current city services. Then one year ago, in fiscal year 2025, to address the predicted structural budget gap, departments were directed to submit their general fund operating budget at the same level as the prior year while prioritizing the city council's essential services and council priorities. As a result of departments minimizing their budgeted expenses and the additional actions described here, the proposed fiscal year 2025 general fund operating budget was closed without the use of reserve funds. The library and the Center for the Arts were moved out of the general fund and are funded with American Rescue Plan Act funds, a temporary one-time source of funds. The library is funded with ARPA for one additional year through fiscal year 2026. The Humane Society contract was funded through December, at which time the city did renew the contract for the full fiscal year. In addition, 10 full-time vacant positions were eliminated. In an effort to preserve public safety resources, these are the 10 full-time vacant positions that were eliminated from these departments last year, resulting in a reduction to the general fund budget of over $915,000. The reduction in staff has challenged the city to operate effectively. Revenue generating opportunities have been explored and some fully implemented with the approval of the city council. This includes joining the paramedic ground emergency medical transportation program, moving the user fee schedule to full cost recovery, those fees are effective September 2024, and the city is in the process of implementing or establishing a short-term rental program. Despite these efforts, operating revenue is not keeping pace with the growing costs for city services. Without the benefit of a general sales tax and with no major changes to the city's source of revenue or operating expenses, all reserves and one-time sources of funds would be depleted by fiscal year 2029. With that in mind, we're going to take a moment to review the potential outcomes to city programs and services with no new revenue that staff have presented over the last two fiscal years to address the general fund deficit. In the previous two budget cycles, staff presented different scenarios for the programs and services that the city would need to consider eliminating when all available one-time funds and reserve balances are depleted. Police, fire and public works, as you can see on this chart, make up 81% of the total general fund expenses. In order to close an estimated $10 million in an annual budget deficit, those departments were considered first as it would be impossible to hold public safety harmless and balance the budget each fiscal year. We'll begin with the police department, which makes up the largest portion of the general fund at 44% of total operating expenses. For the police department, in order to close that estimated $10 million budget deficit, their budget reduction target was a little over $4.1 million. In order to accomplish this, the department would have eliminated three traffic officers and two detectives, three cops officers and two school resource officers, reduce the number of public safety dispatchers from 24 to 21 and eliminate two customer service representatives. Five part-time parking attendant positions would be eliminated along with the software and equipment. Police staff would not assist with special events to reduce the overtime expenses and upgrades for the computer aided dispatch equipment would be deferred. The animal control services contract with the Humane Society would be eliminated as well as the contract with Education Compact. The next largest department in the general fund is fire, which makes up 27% of the total general fund expenses. Their budget reduction target was $2.6 million. To accomplish this figure, one fire station would be closed and one ambulance service eliminated. Next is Public Works, which makes up 10% of the general fund and Development Services, which makes up 6%. To help close the projected budget deficit, the two departments would be combined and 45 staff positions eliminated. The reduction in staff would result in a reduction of many services across the city. Some examples include the response to homelessness, graffiti, the cleaning of restrooms and trash pickup or public parks and facilities. The time to address and repair potholes would increase. Code compliance services would be minimized and the planning commission eliminated. The deputy building official and economic development division would be eliminated or reduced. Next is Community Services, which makes up 5% of the total general fund and their budget reduction target is about $2.5 million. To reach this goal, recreation programs would not be provided as a city service. This would eliminate 15 full-time and 135 temporary part-time positions and result in the closure of parks and community facilities. This would include the East Valley Community Center and Sports Center at Kit Carson. Programming at city pools would be eliminated and the volunteer program would be reduced. The public art program would be eliminated. The Park Avenue Community Center would close and the Senior Nutrition and Older Adult Services Program would no longer be offered. Next is the library. The library would also be considered as a service to be cut in order to address the general fund deficit. Currently, the library is operated under a management agreement with LSNS, Library Systems and Services. In 2024, as I mentioned, could the city council approve the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to fund the library for fiscal year 2025 and 2026? That funding expires in fiscal year 2027. A smaller organization likely requires less administrative activities, so an additional 10 administrative positions in the general fund would be eliminated with projected savings of about $1.3 million. The remaining category of expenses in the general fund is for the California Center for the Arts. The facility is owned by the city of Escondido and operated by the California Center for the Arts Foundation under a management agreement. Operation and financial support is provided to the foundation from the city for various items, including a management fee, all gas and electricity utility bills for the campus and support from building maintenance and network administration. Closing the CCAE facility would result in annual savings of approximately $2.1 million. This, these expenses were funded by the American Rescue Plan Act in fiscal year 2025. This funding source is depleted and no longer an option for funding in future years. Thankfully, the citizens of Escondido have given us an opportunity to address to address the ongoing budget deficit and preserve programs and services with their approval of Measure I. In the November 2024 election, Escondido voters approved Measure I with 61.12% in favor, according to the San Diego County Register of Voters. This measure implements a one cent sales tax increase, which raised the sales tax rate from 7.75% to 8.75%. Unless extended by voters, the measure will end after 20 years and Measure I is a general tax. It's important to note the difference between a general tax and a special tax. A general tax is levied for general governmental purposes and can be used to fund a wide range of public services and programs at the discretion of the local government's governing body compared to a special tax, which is imposed for specific purposes, meaning the revenue generated is dedicated to funding particular projects or services. As I noted, Measure I is a general tax. There are no restrictions in how the funds can be spent. However, without initial guidance in the first year of implementing Measure I, staff have prepared a preliminary operating budget for Measure I using these items that were identified in the ballot as a guideline. That includes providing public safety, addressing homelessness, improving street sidewalks and infrastructure, increasing police, fire and paramedic services, reducing traffic congestion and maintaining parks, trails and open space. With the passage of Measure I, Escondido's current sales tax rate in Escondido is now 8.75%. So for every $100 in taxable items purchased in Escondido, sales tax of So for every $100 in taxable items purchased in Escondido, sales tax of $8.75 is potentially collected. Of this amount, $6 goes to the state, $1 goes to the city of Escondido, 50 cents goes to Transnet, and 25 cents goes to the county of San Diego. Transnet funds, I should know, are spent on street pedestrian and bicycle transportation programs through Sandac. The addition of Measure I provides another $1 that goes directly to the city of Escondido and provides local control over local revenue for services that directly impact our residents. With the passage of Measure I, the city of Escondido's sales tax rate is now in alignment with our neighboring cities. This is a list of all cities in San Diego County. The top three at the top of the slide were the ballot measures most recently approved in the November 2024 election. There are a few differences between how sales tax is collected for the 1% sales tax revenue that every city in the state of California receives versus a local district tax like Measure I. Traditionally, the local tax allocation methodology is based on the place of sale or where their business is located. Voter-approved district taxes are allocated on a destination methodology where tax generally follows the buyer. Traditional brick-and-mortar retailers, restaurants, and service stations will continue to generate a proportional amount of district tax compared to their normal local tax reporting. However, auto dealerships actually generate less local district tax because the only vehicles registered in Escondido will be assessed the additional 1% tax. Predicting sales tax revenue is also very challenging. This chart shows the history of sales tax revenue collected by Escondido by fiscal year going back to 2001. National and world events like the recession that began in 2008, or most recently the COVID pandemic, have an impact on the economy and in turn the sales tax revenue that the city depends on to fund city services. To forecast the anticipated revenue collected from Measure I, the city's base sales tax revenue is used as the starting point. As I noted earlier, the major differences in when Measure I is collected compared to the base sales tax revenue for the city is for auto sales and the county pool, which are the city's two largest sales tax categories. The ballot language for Measure I estimated annual revenue of $28 million. We assume that the citizens' group used an estimate from the city's previous ballot measure efforts in 2022. The city did not engage with consultants to prepare a comprehensive review for this most recent effort. However, after Measure I was officially passed by voters and the appropriate paperwork was filed with the state, city staff did reach out to two different sales tax consultants to prepare a preliminary forecast for the Measure I funds. As noted on the previous slide, the city's base sales tax rate of 1% is used as the starting point for the forecast. That is the $45,543,320. HDL, the city's current sales tax consultant, is projecting Measure I revenue of $35 million or 77% of the base sales tax amount. Avenue Insights, the city's former sales tax consultant, is projecting a much higher capture rate of 92% or a little over $41 million. Auto sales are the number-one sales tax producer in Escondido and also has the most differences in what transactions are subject to the Measure I local tax. The Measure I tax will only be collected for cars registered in Escondido. Given that, the staff recommendation is to budget for revenue of $38,484,150, which is the average between the two forecast models. And then, once we have a full quarter of actual sales tax receipts to work from, staff will return to city council with a report out and will have actual analytical data to better project this revenue moving forward. The new sales tax went into effect April 1st of 2025. The first cash distributions to the city will be received in July of 2025. Revenue projections will be analyzed each month and projections adjusted after the first full quarter of actual data is received. Measure I approved voters approved Measure I to provide funding for essential city services, which also support the general fund. This chart shows the forecast after combining potential Measure I revenue with the current general fund projected revenue, resulting in additional available resources that can be allocated to new services and projects. Next, staff will be discussing the recommended budget for Measure I for this fiscal year. Each budgeted item is listed into one of these four categories. New means it is a brand-new item or position. Reinstated is an expense that was previously eliminated and is being brought back into the budget. Upgraded are line items or positions that are being increased or reclassified. And existing are items that are currently in the general fund that staff are recommending to move to Measure I as we continue to address the general fund structural budget deficit. With that, I'm going to turn it over to interim police chief Banks to discuss the police department.
Hi, my name is Ryan Banks. I'm the interim police chief for the Escondido Police Department. So, one of the existing costs that we'll be going over to Measure I are the seven cops officers. The police department remains committed to addressing homelessness. Seven cops officers will continue to quickly respond to calls for service, proactively address issues throughout the community, and help find high-level solutions for community members experiencing homelessness. Another existing cost I'll move over is the animal control services. City contracts with the San Diego Humane Society provide animal control services. The current agreement ends in June 30th of 2026. Staff is researching alternative and cost-effective strategies for future animal control commitments. For the MNO, there will be a new one moving over. Maintenance operation funds include critical safety equipment, investigative resources, community policing services, and law enforcement training expenses. The proposed line items reflect current needs based on safety, customer service, and operations. There's going to be a new position for program coordinator. This new position will handle the administrative responsibilities related to the city's short-term rental program. Additional duties will include administration of other regulated businesses such as massage, bingo, cabaret, and ABC. Another new line item will be 37 police department vehicles. These replacement vehicles include police cars and specialty vehicle replacements for crime scene investigations and detectives. Next slide, please, Miss. For the past several years, the structural deficit has forced a police department to underfund its maintenance operations budget. The previous line items represented only a portion of actual needs and expenditures. Because these items are crucial, the police department used salary savings from vacant police department positions to address the funding shortage.
Good evening, council. I'm Division Chief Tyler Batson here for Chief Tanger. I'll briefly present updates on both existing and new fire department investments supported by Measure I. One fire station and one ambulance. The city of Escondido Fire Department remains committed to protecting our community from fire, medical, and environmental emergencies. Continued funding for our seventh fire station and fifth ambulance ensures we maintain and provide the highest standards of service for our residents and visitors in that district. Northcom membership. In October of 2023, the city of Escondido joined the North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority, or Northcom. This partnership continues to enhance community safety along with firefighter safety. First responder Recovery Navigation Service, Ready Rebound, offers expedited care navigation for injured firefighters, allowing access to specialists within hours instead of weeks. This personalized rehabilitation helps reduce time off duty and minimizes the financial and operational impact of extended absences. Lexipol Operation Policy Service. Lexipol provides a comprehensive cloud-based platform for managing fire department policies and improves consistency, compliance, and operational efficiency across all personnel. Three new positions: division chief, battalion chief, and administrative assistant. In response to growing service demands and increased operational complexity, these new positions will strengthen leadership capacity, enhance readiness, support community risk reduction, and improve overall service delivery. And lastly, new apparatus: two utility trucks and three Type 1 fire engines or pumpers. These vehicles will replace aging apparatus to maintain fleet reliability and readiness. It's important to note that current industry-standard build times for fire engines range from two to four years after purchase, making early procurement essential. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Chris McKenney, Director of Development Services and Deputy City Manager. The first six positions on the table before you are positions that were authorized in February. The three planner positions will allow the department to begin work on needed updates to the city municipal and zoning codes and the general plan. These positions will also open capacity in the rest of the planning staff to improve development project processing times. The two code compliance officers will work on compliance of the upcoming short-term rental regulations and provide capacity to the code compliance team to be more proactive in addressing code compliance issues rather than strictly being reactive. The remaining positions are new positions under consideration for the FY '26 budget. The two inspector positions and the buildings' plan examiner will add capacity to the building and engineering division to reduce processing times for projects in the building permitting and construction phases. The traffic engineering position will restore lost capacity to the traffic engineering section, allowing staff to address, in concert with the police department, the backlog of traffic safety analyses and to decrease review times for traffic safety improvement projects. The analyst positions, along with another analyst position in the city manager's office budget, will plan future year's capital improvement program with an emphasis on public engagement and will work to define and monitor performance metrics to measure the effects of the ongoing development services streamlining effort. And then finally, the engineering position will restore lost capacity to the engineering division for traffic and land development projects. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joe Galart, your Director of Public Works. With the restructure of community services reporting into public works, the combined forces will bring better alignment and improved customer service around recreational programming, rentable spaces, special events, youth leagues, and our volunteering programs. To restore and restructure current department operations, expand organizational capacity to deliver on council's strategic priorities related to community development and public safety, and reduce the burden on individual staff members, staff is recommending adding new positions and the reinstatement of past positions funded by Measure I to meet these objectives. ClimatTech was engaged to design and implement an energy roadmap. To prepare for potential financing, staff is recommending allocating funds for the estimated annual debt service payments. Recommendations for the full project list will be presented to council on June 4th. As the city continues to address general fund budget deficits and evaluates these cost centers, staff is recommending to transition recommendations made by the water and wastewater consultant to Measure I. Reedy Creek has faced a series of well-documented challenges that have contributed to financial shortfalls and is forecasting an operational loss this fiscal year. Staff is recommending supplementing this shortfall with Measure I. The next slide is a list of proposed projects recommended for one-time Measure I investments to address deferred maintenance and improving infrastructure with a prioritization of public safety and critical facility assets. Two of these projects are proposed to be reinstated and four new projects to address critical deferred maintenance needs. The next slide is a list of projects recommended for annual Measure I investments to address deferred maintenance and improving infrastructure. Five of the six projects are proposed to be reinstated. The new project will seek to refurbish our aging elevators at city facilities. These upgrades will include safety enhancements, energy efficiency upgrades, reliability improvements, and the rebuilding of mechanical components to be in compliance with state regulations. I'll now pass the presentation over to our city attorney, Mike McGinnis.
The city attorney's office provides advisory and prosecutorial support for the police department, rangers, and code compliance. As these departments ramp up on enforcement programs like short-term rentals, vacancy control, and homeless encampment cleanups, my office will be understaffed to handle that influx of cases, both civil and criminal. We currently only have one code prosecutor, and her time is divided with attention to other non-code and criminal matters. The new deputy city attorney and clerical support positions will allow for meaningful and sustained legal services to support local enforcement of these new programs. Thank you.
Again, Deputy City Manager McKenney outlined that this management analyst was going to be added to the city manager's office to work on a variety of issues, including performance metrics, and be able to demonstrate that these investments have produced results. So that's what you're going to see in next year's budget, is a report out in each of these investments and what it's been able to generate for the city. Additionally, we want to start engaging in a policy conversation around smart city opportunities, as council has illustrated the need for certain types of technology in the field, but that has to be balanced with the public's right to know about how those materials are going to be used. And so, money would be set aside to start an engagement process and provide the policy framework for future investments in a smart city conversation.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Collins, the Assistant Director of Communications. Adding a position to the communications team comes at the direction of the city council's last workshop. This position will be focused on creating original content, sharing public information and events through the city's established social media channels. Investment in this position will help us market the city, also be able to share public information more freely, and additionally, expand on our storytelling here in Escondido. The second item is an online community outreach tool. This will be a way for our residents to provide two-way feedback with us about upcoming CIP projects and other city projects. This tool will be managed in the communications office, but will be available for all projects across the city.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Perpetua, Director of Human Resources. Historically, the city has never had a dedicated recruitment position. It's been collapsed from two different positions. And so, with the current vacancy rate at 60 with all of our existing positions, adding in the 27 additional positions you'll see here, we really need another classification to help with that workload and dedicate time to filling all of those vacancies and keeping the city running, because that just takes a tremendous lift. So that would be the human resources technician. Also, you'll see a reinstated position. Back in this fiscal year, we eliminated our senior safety analyst. So this is a reinstatement, but we're actually downgrading the position a bit. This will give us the ability to have more effort in the safety programs, policies, because the duties from that position that was eliminated, that workload was shifted on to two other positions, and so this will allow us to refocus those priorities to safety programs, policies, and having boots on the ground out in the field. Thank you.
Thank you all. So this next slide is a summary of what we just went through of the one-time investments that we are proposing to be Measure I-funded. This is a summary of the annual investments in the preliminary Measure I budget. And then, this is the list of all staff positions, both existing and new, that are recommended in the Measure I operating budget. So next, I will discuss the fiscal year 2026 general fund operating budget. This slide shows the fiscal year 2025 current fiscal year operating budget in that first column compared to the preliminary fiscal year 2026 budget. At the beginning of the budget season, once all departments had submitted their budgets, the general fund operating deficit was $16,848,060. General fund operating revenues are projected to decline by .03%, and I'll go through those specifics later on in the presentation. General fund operating expenses are projected to increase by 9.1% compared to the prior year. year. There are several primary cost drivers in the fiscal year 2026 preliminary general fund budget that are contributing to these increased expenses. First is the CalPERS activity. Every year, the city and employees contribute to CalPERS to pay for future retirement benefits. CalPERS expenses for fiscal year 2026 include a normal cost based on a percentage of employee salaries. CalPERS determines normal cost rate annually based on actuarial assumptions. Both of these percentages have actually decreased from the prior fiscal year, from 11.16% to 10.83% for the miscellaneous plan, and 20, from 22.13% to 21.66% for the safety plan. The CalPERS unfunded accrued liability payment, however, did increase this fiscal year by about $2.2 million in the general fund.
Mayor, can I cut in real quick? A little bit of an update. If you recall, the city council adopted in 2022 a resolution authorizing the issuance of pension obligation bonds, and that, of course, was premised on there being good market conditions and a financial benefit for doing that. It wasn't going to be automatic. That resolution was challenged in court. The city won in both the trial and appellate courts, and then the challengers had petitioned for review in the California Supreme Court where that case still resides. We're kind of positioned behind the city of San Jose, who has a very similar case to ours that's currently before the California Supreme Court. Once they decide that case, our case will fall in right behind that. So you're probably looking at a horizon of six months to a year, probably. So just a quick update, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
I will also note on the CalPERS unfunded accrued liability, this is, this chart is based on current CalPERS projections. The unfunded liability payment is projected to significantly decrease by fiscal year 2024, 2045, which is around the time Measure I sets. Next is our insurance funds. This is a list of the general liability and property insurance policies held by the city and the projected fiscal year 2026 premiums. General liability insurance covers items such as employment practices, theft, cyber attacks, and pollution events. Property insurance covers flood, earthquake, and auto damage for all city-owned property. This next chart is a five-year history of general liability insurance premiums, which have increased by about 130% since 2022. This is due to an increase in the number and size of extremely large losses over the last several years, resulting in deterioration of pooled funds to cover claims. Looking at the past five years of property insurance premiums, the amounts have increased by about 163% since 2021, a little over 247,000 this fiscal year. This is due to more frequent large loss events, greater loss exposure in critical areas, and an increase in the severity of weather and climate events recently, specifically related to wildfires and winter storms. At fiscal year 2025, city council approved the purchase of two ambulances for the fire department and 39 police department vehicles. The ambulances were funded with paramedic fees from the additional ground emergency medical transportation revenue, and the police department vehicles were funded with an available reserve balance in the workers' compensation insurance fund. This fiscal year for the fire department, there are two trucks and three pumpers that are past their useful life and need to be replaced. In addition, 37 police department vehicles are also past their useful life and are scheduled to be replaced this upcoming fiscal year. Next, I'm going to review major budget impacts within individual department budgets. But first, this is a summary of the items that staff are recommending to be Measure I-funded in fiscal year 25, 26, that the staff just previewed a few minutes ago. The expenses are no longer included in the general fund operating budget and have been This slide shows the general fund categories of departments, the current fiscal year 2025 budget compared to the fiscal year 2026 preliminary operating budget, after those items have been taken out and reallocated to Measure I. Overall, operating expenses increased by $5.2 million, or about 3.9%. So starting at the top line with administrative services, these are the specific categories of departments within that administrative services category. So for the city council department budget, this increased by a net $16,930, or a little over 5.1%. For new items, a supplies budget of $2,000 each for the mayor and each district was added for community events. There was also funding allocated for the sister city's international travel program. For the city manager's office, funds of $200,000 were added to fund a citywide customer service initiative this upcoming fiscal year. For the city treasurer's department, in November 2022, voters approved Measure G, which amended the Escondido municipal code, and adopted ordinance 2022-19, which reduced the city treasurer's compensation. This is the first full fiscal budget year of that, of implementing that ordinance, which is reflected in the decrease in the overall operating budget. Economic development was previously accounted for in the city manager's office budget in fiscal year 2026. This department was pulled out as a separate economic development budget and will now be accounted and reported for separately. New items include an administrative coordinator position, a full-time real property agent, which is a reclassification from a temporary part-time position, funds for an ag tech innovation hub, consulting services for a property-based improvement district known as P-Bed, and funds for real property consulting services. The finance department includes new funds of $100,000 to engage with a consultant to prepare a fleet services funding analysis in order to make recommendations for funding the city's fleet replacement program. For development services, the engineering department updated their projected payroll allocations to capital projects to better reflect actual time spent directly on projects, resulting in an increase in their operating budget. The community services overall division decreased. The contract with the school district for the after-school program was not renewed for this upcoming fiscal year, so the city will not be a service provider. As a result, the budgeted costs for temporary part-time staff were reduced. And as I noted earlier in the presentation, the California Center for the Arts Management Fee and Utilities were funded with American Rescue Plan Act funds this current fiscal year 2025. Those funds have been depleted, so these costs have been moved back to the general The community relations budget was established to provide funding for community events and account for staff time. Budgeted special events include the community fireworks, Cruising Grand, the Christmas Parade, and Veterans Day. Just to note on the decrease, the season of Cruising Grand is shorter this fiscal year, which resulted in a decrease of budgeted expenses from the prior year. So with that said, and the reallocations of items moved to Measure I noted earlier, the general fund is balanced. This next chart is the sources and uses for the Measure I operating budget, noting the recommended forecast of $38,484,150. The total recommended expenses, total $29,644,300. With those two funds combined, that leaves a remaining sources of $8,839,850. Staff will be recommending an allocation of $2 million from these funds to support the city streets program. Staff will be presenting that during the capital improvement budget workshop on June There are three additional staff positions that have been added to other funds in the preliminary operating budget. This includes a SCADA engineer for the water fund, a control systems technician for the wastewater fund, and a network systems engineer for information systems. Citywide, there are 27 recommended new staff positions, nine part-time positions to be upgraded to full-time, and four positions that are reinstated from cuts in previous budget years. And last, we will provide, I'll provide the status of current year operating revenue for the upcoming fiscal year. This table shows the fiscal year 2025 budgeted operating revenue, followed by the fiscal year 2026 amounts projected. Overall revenue is projected to be fairly flat compared to this fiscal year, with a slight decrease of $40,560. Sales tax is the largest component of the general fund, making up 35% of total revenue. The city works closely with a sales tax consultant, HDL, in predicting sales tax revenue. Based on HDL's analysis of year-to-date tax receipts and an examination of the local economy, the city's sales tax revenue is anticipated to decline by about $722,460, or about 1.5% when compared to this current fiscal year. In addition to potential inflation, interest rates, and weaker consumer confidence, there's also uncertainty around auto sales. The average age of a vehicle on the road has reached a record high of over 12.6 years. However, car prices remain high, which may deter some buyers. The impacts from tariffs on consumers is also unknown. Property tax revenue also represents a major portion of the general fund operating revenue at 29%. The city receives approximately 10% of the property tax paid by property owners. The remaining balance of the tax paid goes to school districts, the state, and other agencies. The major factors influencing property tax revenue are the annual inflation adjustment under Proposition 13, which is capped at 2%, the number of home sales, and increased median home prices. Other taxes include franchise fees, transient occupancy tax, business license fees, and the redevelopment property tax trust fund, known as RPTTF, account for 15% of general fund revenue. These other taxes are projected to increase by about 0.9% to reach projected revenue of $19.7 million. Charges for services are projected to decrease compared to the prior fiscal year, with estimated revenue of $17.3 million. Charges for services include paramedic fees, community service fees for recreational and community activities, and charges for development-related services, which include engineering and planning. Revenue estimates for community services are based on the projected number of facilities and classes. In the prior fiscal year, the city entered into a partnership with the Escondido Union School District. The before-and-after-school program was fully funded with $1 million by the school district, and as I noted, that partnership ended this fiscal year, so that's resulting in a reduction in revenue of $1 million. Intergovernmental revenue includes the RINCON Fire Services Agreement, state mandated cost claims, and various grants, and is projected to increase overall by approximately $75,580, or 1.8%, or 2.4%. Rental income includes income from city-owned properties, including the North County Mall, shared revenue with the city of San Diego for activity generated at the Vineyard Golf Course, and small-sell tower lease revenue. This revenue is projected to increase by 2.5% to reach revenue of $4.1 million. Permits and licenses are collected for building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire code, and mobile home permits, and are projected to remain flat compared to the prior fiscal Fines and forfeitures are projected to decrease slightly from the prior fiscal year to reach $850,200. Fines and forfeitures are collected by the city for vehicle code fines, parking ticket fines, other court fines, code enforcement citations, and impound fees. Investment and other revenue or miscellaneous receipts projections have been increased by approximately $592,150. As of March 2025, the city treasurer has reported a return on investments of 3.514%. I will note, American Rescue Plan Act funding increased the city's cash balances when it was first distributed in 2021. More funds have been able to be invested the last couple fiscal years. So as ARPA-funded projects such as Grand Avenue move forward, the available cash balance that can be invested will decrease. As I conclude this presentation, I'll end by reviewing the upcoming city council budget meeting dates. Today's workshop is for the fiscal year 2026 preliminary operating budget. On June 11th, there will be a workshop for the fiscal year 2026 preliminary capital improvement program budget, and then both budgets are scheduled to be adopted by the city council on June 18th. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any council members who have questions or comments, please put yourself in the queue before we go to public comments?
None.
None? Okay, that must mean you did a great job. Thank you for presenting a balanced budget. I believe that this reflects the priority set forth by the city council. I was able to ask my questions in our budget subcommittee meeting, so I'll go ahead and stop there, and Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. As I said last week, when, in the last presentation, for everybody that's watching this, this is, the amount of work that was involved in this is tremendous. So I just really want to thank you for, we talked about this earlier, that, looking literally at thousands of numbers a day. So I'm just very impressed, and I'm very, I'm very happy with the presentation that's been, that's been provided to us. Again, I think, I'll hold off on a few of my comments, but I do really appreciate the increase in development services. That's something that I've been pushing for the last two years. Very, very appreciative of that, very happy to see it. Again, speaking with the police department, especially with Chief Varso before he left, I think the increase in not just the vehicles, but the cops division, I think is going to be very important as well, especially as we really get a grasp on the homelessness situation. I think looking at increasing in, you know, more safety, more policing for cops, and hopefully a pert, I think would be extremely important for us. Working with nonprofits, with children, children's welfare, and speaking with partners to see which programs are most effective, I think that's also something we're going to have to do when we're looking at the extra monies that were, that are going to be coming in and how to use them. Of course, that's going to be more detailed conversation, but I just really want to, again, say thank you, thank you for everybody, every department head that's come here to speak. I think it's been, there's a lot of great potential that's coming up, so thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you so much for all the work you put into this presentation and all the staff that presented. It was pretty much almost 100 slides, wow. Just a couple questions on the Reedy Creek item. I saw that debt service was part of that. Was there any other specifics on the Reedy Creek budget line item?
So yeah, there's, they're still waiting for equipment that we had ordered that we funded with ARPA funds. So, you know, from an operations standpoint, they don't have the equipment to really operate effectively. Public Works has done quite a bit of work out there. We cleaned up the pond. I don't know if you've seen what we did when we removed the reeds. They're, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, but their, their activity is up, it's just their, their operation costs are high.
Okay. And you're saying that the equipment that was ordered still hasn't arrived, or?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you need any ETA on that?
We do not have an ETA on it, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. I was curious about Reedy Creek. I hadn't heard about it in a while, so I was wondering what the specifics were on that. And then since Teresa's are smiling at me, I had a question about the online comment outreach tool. I don't know if you already have identified what that will be, but it sounds interesting. I wanted to see if I could get more info on that.
Yeah, we were able to preview this with the CATS, the Community, the Community, I'm going to forget the acronym, Active Transportation Strategy, there it is, with the CATS outreach. So it's an online tool that allows us to put forward a project to solicit feedback, also advertise meetings, opportunities to come speak, as well as allow the community to identify their, like, wish list using like a map feature. So I can say, I really want a pocket park in my neighborhood, and I can put a pin right there and show, and then that gives staff some kind of sentiment and feedback to get priority direction from the council and Sean to research potential, and then provide feedback to the community about what that would take to get that funded. So it's like kind of a whole lifecycle of a tool that would live, it would integrate with the website but live outside of the website. It's a very low barrier. We can set it so that you don't have to, like, create an account or have an email address, you can still participate. And then another thing we can do is show past projects, so we also can kind of report out on, this project has ended as a reminder, this is how it was funded, this is how it was received, that kind of thing, too. So that will be managed by the communications team, as I mentioned, but it will be available to all departments to use, and that is one of the tasks of our newly onboarded management analysts in the city manager's office.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, that was a tool that I was talking about last week, or last meeting about Sandag, and I remember using that tool, and, where you could see how many people complained about the same problem area. So I love that you can, you know, do pin drops and all that. I think that's fantastic, and the fact that everyone can see what's been submitted and the status in real time. So I'm a huge fan of that, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then one other question on- And then one other question on the events budget. If we can go to that slide, and let me go back to my presentation screen. Okay, thank you. So here I have, I see four events for community relations. Wanted to get more information about this because there's four already identified, but I don't recall us having a council discussion on these particular events, so any background or kind of, if you can present what this is in front of me?
So last year in the budget, we identified four events to bring forward as city events, and the council ratified that during the budget process. These are still the same four events, and the idea was to eliminate some barriers around them operating, so they, they are, they are now considered city events, and we work with those and the proposed, and the, and the event organizers to make sure that those events are carried off. So it's beyond permitting, staff time, staff relationship, but that came into the city's budget cycle in last year's budget, was the council approved.
Yes, I remember that came after the fact. So then, if we were to want to add or change these, any process, is it just that we're making, you know, these are tradition, I know these are tradition for our, Veterans Day is kind of a new thing, but these are mostly like parades, and then the Fourth of July event, we buy the fireworks for that. Is it, these are just kind of a traditional events that happen every year?
Yes.
And we're, and we're just making sure that they happen smoothly, and it's mostly the staff time? Can you just share a little bit about what kind of support we give?
We can provide a breakdown of the detail on the staff time, but it's mostly, it's mostly our public safety services, but it's also community, community services time. One of the things that's, these things work in conjunction. One of the things that identified based on council's input is to add a special events person that is in the budget so that we can, we can evolve these conversations moving forward. Right now, as has been laid out, there's a lot of big ideas that need staff support associated with them. So this, again, is continuing this program. Council identified wanting to be more involved in events. We've identified a position that will live in the community services department, but that will be hired upon approval of the budget. So it is a, this is where we're at with an idea to address in the future, what do we mean by events? I think it goes beyond that. It also is going to go, what's a legacy event that we're not sponsoring, because it's also about access to space in the city. There's some limitations on what that space. I've talked to Public Works Director Joe Galart about doing a presentation about what actually happens in Grape Day Park, and getting council to understand the impacts that it has on the park, and is, what is our capacity and our willingness as we get into the events? What are you looking for out of the park? Because if the park picks up in activity, it's actually going to be hard to maintain certain features such as green grass, but maybe we want to evolve somewhere else and think about that park in a different way. But those are conversations that will come forward with the hiring of an individual who's focused on the events moving forward. Right now, it is a, I've asked senior staff to fill in and fill the gaps. That is really depleting their ability to manage their core functions, but also it's not a recipe that I can sustain, because eventually somebody's going to ask me, why am I doing six jobs? And where I could go somewhere else and only do maybe three. So, so this is also about restoring capacity of the organization as we get this. So this is a point in time, was improved in last budget cycle, but it is, it is a space that we're fully committed to investigating in the future.
Perfect, thank you. No other questions?
Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Yes, I, I just want to say that I believe the city manager, Sean McGlynn, just really put it so well when he said, with what the community did in passing Measure I, it's going to help the people realize their dreams of Escondido. And just listening to all the things that we're doing, staff is being fiscally responsible, we're covering the necessary bases, and just making sure that, you know, everything is in order and all the things, and I think, again, the city manager said that all these things, putting it in order, is what's going to create revenue, even though we're talking about these expenses that have to go out. Again, safety first with everything. I just was looking at all the cutbacks, and I only knew about half of them. That's incredible. That is, that would be tragic. I'm grateful that Measure I passed, and just knowing that the positions that were cut and investigations, you know, I know certain positions, human trafficking and others that helped juveniles, and then also a lot of the programs that were going to be cut, you know, that would hurt so many people in our community. And then even with the, the fire engines and the equipment that the, the fire department has been working with or has made to work, just being able to replace that and, again, provide better emergency services. I do recall when I went on a ride along that we were having to call ambulances from Oceanside and Carlsbad, whoever was available. So I think just what the community did with this, and also you're prioritizing how we're going to spend the community money to give them a safe environment and take care of the people that live in our city, draw in businesses that want to come here because of the great city that we are, are bringing together. I'm just really grateful for the people and just grateful for everybody here that has put so much thought into it with the priorities, the positions, and how to just wrap it all together so it works well. And again, being fiscally responsible and creating future revenue in case we ever come up into a tight position in the future that we are prepared. So I don't have any questions other than good job, and just thank you for how you prioritized what it is that we're going to be providing our citizens.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. So presentation was, was great. The history was also very, it was a good reminder of where we have been, how far we've come along, or we're coming along is probably more accurate. So thank you for that very much. I also appreciate the fact that a hundred slides were not two hours. Now, if I would have been providing the, it probably would have taken two or three hours, but thank you very much for that. I very much appreciate that now. Couple of things. I have gotten some comments from the community as they were reviewing our agenda, and they just said, Joe, can you just please voice that Measure I is about new investment in the community? We understand that there, there will be reinstatements or changes, existing positions going from the general fund to the, to Measure I, but nonetheless, let's be transparent about that. And I said, and that's what the meeting's about tonight, to be transparent, to let the community know, this is the direction that we're heading. So as I share what the community has been sharing with me, it's about making sure that we continue to make those investments of Measure I, not just moving from the general fund to Measure I. That was one of the comments, or some of the comments that I did receive. I'm excited to see, and I hear over and over again, that the police department will be fully staffed, that that's something that hasn't happened in many, many, many years. So chief, you know, really excited about that. Thank you so much for all the hard work, for everyone doing that. Now, I do have concern. As I go around spending my tax dollars in my city, I notice that businesses are still on the receipts, they're still charging seven-point-seven-five, and they haven't increased to eight-point-seven-five. So I will go to the owner and say, hey, you all voted this, and it's eight-point-seven-five, please, you need to change this, right? So I just want, and I began now finding more as I pay attention, I'm noticing more businesses that that's what's going on. Oh, thanks, I didn't know, we need to change it. So I just wonder if we may need a reminder out there that we need to, they need to make that change. So that was one thing that I thought was really important, that, that we needed to remind everyone, because I don't know if there's any penalties that happen or anything like that, but it was an oversight. So, oh, we were so busy, didn't realize that we needed to change that.
Yes, thank you. I will take that feedback back to our sales tax consultants, HDL. Part of their contract as well is to review our records and identify that specific issue with the new tax. So they are continuously performing outreach and educating, as well as the CDTF Day, the state that collects the tax. So there is a little bit of a transition period, but for anyone that the consultant identifies that hasn't reported the full tax, they will work with them with the audit. We do kind of go back and collect the revenue, may or may not, that was not collected, depends on the situation, but yes, our consultants actively look into that.
Beautiful, thank you. And, well, I'm glad that we're making sure that this is well and transparent, that we have an oversight committee that will be looking at that, and this first year is critical, how we invest this money that has been trusted to us, because there's, we're barely figuring it out, right? So, and I think it's, it's not only impressive, but I must thank you and the entire team that are, have been working so diligently to put this together. Thank you very much, and I have heard from my colleagues, and I have said it, too, I believe that twenty-twenty-five is going to be a great year for Escondido. So thank you so much.
All right, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so thank you very much. I feel like we got through that pretty quick for ninety-something slides. That brings us to our current business, which is the board and commission appointments. Do you have anything to present, or, okay, cool. Do you have any public comments on this item?
No public comments. I do have the list, if you'd like me to bring it up on the screen, if that'd be helpful.
Sure, you can do that. This time was interesting, because I feel like for the last two-and-a-half years, we've done a really good job at giving new people an opportunity to serve on the boards and commissions, but in particular with the library board and the public art commission, I felt it was critical to keep some seniority on there with John Schwab and Carol Rogers. With the transportation commission, I actually spoke, I happened to bump into a couple of different transportation committee, commission members right after the interviews, who both spoke very highly of Ms. Hatley, who's in the back there, and expressed interest in keeping her around, and very compliment, complimentary about how you run the meetings and maintain the order, so. But Austin just edged out in my mind, another applicant, I think his name was David. And with the planning commission, you know, we had a lot of good applicants. There was only one who mentioned Rena, who mentioned middle-income housing, and with the deputy mayor's question, I felt he had the best answer, and that was, our job isn't to necessarily pick winners and losers, but to implement the vision of the city council and the local code. So that explains the names there. I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain a motion. There was none, I asked. There's no public comments?
Correct, no public.
Anybody want to make a motion? Okay, I have a motion second. Yeah, go ahead and turn your mic on.
Yeah, thank you to everyone who applied. Always really excited to see people wanting to serve their city, and Mayor, based on your recommendations, you know, I know that you asked us for our recommendations, and I feel like most of the folks that I, you know, recommended made it, so maybe, you know, I appreciate you asking our input and following that kind of process of, you know, the top, and also explaining why you're choosing, who you're choosing for plans, which is a, yeah, I will support your recommendations.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's vote.
Voting is open.
Sounds good.
Motion approved, five-zero.
Does anybody have anything they need to add to a future agenda? And if not, we'll go to council member subcommittee reports and begin with Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Yes, so as council members, we are assigned to not just things here in the city, but also in the county, and I'm on the San Diego Air Pollution Control District Board, and we just had an interesting thing happen in that some, some of the smaller cities, well, the majority being in North County and in the coast, on the coast, they were going to be pushed out of some very important votes because of the population of our city. So as council members, we're here to represent our city, fight for our city, because regardless of our population, we do have a say in how we vote. As in this, on this items, it is air pollution, and we can't control where the wind blows, so we should be able to have a say in that. So I just want to let you know that although they try to silence a lot of voices, we were able to just shut that down, so we still get a vote in a lot of those things. Let's see, this, well, I was gone for a week because I did go to meet my granddaughter, so I didn't get to go to a lot of things last week, so that was fantastic, so I just got back, I'm still happy over that. I just wanted to invite everyone on Monday, the twenty-sixth, at Oak Hill Memorial Park. We will be, I'll be attending, I know Councilman Garcia will be attending, the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post, fifteen-thirteen is hosting the annual Memorial Day service, so it is at nine AM, it is beautiful. If you could just go out there and honor the men and women that have served, that have sacrificed their lives for the freedoms that we have, even to be up here, to agree and disagree, that is a freedom that, that they provided us, and that is all I have.
Councilman Joe Garcia?
All right, I have a few things to report. Thursday, the day after our last meeting, I had an NCTD board meeting, that was on that Thursday. I've had meetings with constituents also that Thursday and this morning. Sunday was the fair, it was absolutely great. A lot of people, I heard great reviews of the new design. In fact, I didn't have a chance to sit down for seven-and-a-half hours. There were just so many people coming by, wanting to talk, and, well, I sat down, and then some people stopped by, and I said, I'm sorry, I tried to get up, but my feet hurt too much, and they got a laugh out of that. But it was an incredible, incredible time at the fair. Monday, I had the opportunity to be at San Pasquale High School for the Stephen Cade's Guitar Tour, together with the mayor and Gibson Guitar. They donated a number of guitars to the music program there at San Pasquale. We had a chance to hear a short, very short concert, I wish it would have been a little longer, but nonetheless, it was a wonderful opportunity, and to see the kids and the students, so excited to get to hear and, and, and meet Stephen. But it was, it was great, and that concludes my report.
One of the things you left out of that is, Joe and I had a line of people asking for our autographs at the very end, so it was kind of cool. Line of students, yeah. Councilmember Garcia?
All right, thank you all. So I had a meeting with the Neighborhood House Association, they're looking to invest in Escondido, which I think is great. They're going to be opening up their Head Start Program here at the Boys and Girls Club, so it's really exciting, you know, that I got to hear about what they're going to be doing. We had a budget subcommittee on Monday, you guys heard a lot of pretty much everything that was presented to us, so that was pretty, you know, insightful. So as always, meeting with constituents, I got to meet with a couple of constituents on Saturday morning, just, you know, they're excited about what's happening in the city, and, you know, I got to, got to feel that excitement. The street festival, as Councilman Garcia mentioned, it was packed. I mean, it, it really, it really filled my heart, just to see so many people there, excited, you could feel the excitement that was there. It wasn't just people just walking through, it was people wanting to see what's new, people wanting to see, you know, how the downtown looks, you know, people really exploring the arts and looking at, you know, really taking the time, and I think that was really beautiful to see. After that, I was invited to by a few constituents to an Israeli Jewish festival in Balboa Park, and just like, you know, my invitation to the Lao community, Lao New Year, I think, invite, you know, being present, those community events, I think it's really special. And, let's see here, we got the homeless numbers, the homeless count just came out, I think, yesterday, and the numbers, I don't want to spoil it for, you know, anybody else who wants to speak about it, but it's really optimistic, it shows the work that our partners, the organizations in, in Escondido have been doing. There's a lot more work to do, but it's a time to- There's a lot more work to do, but it's a time to really, I guess, be proud of the work that's been done and really start to look at what programs are working, why it's working and continue to invest in, in the programs that are working, including not just our police, but also, like I said, our partners here. And as always, thank you to my community for this privilege of serving.
Deputy Mayor?
All right, yeah, on Sunday, I attended the San Diego River Park JPA and Conservancy Volunteer Appreciation Event at Felicita Park. It was a beautiful day with volunteers and supporters. They gave out awards to, the Rangers select their, a recipient each year. Tomorrow, I will be participating for a celebration for Teacher of the Year here in Escondido, really excited about that. And then in the afternoon, the Escondido High School Cougar Showcase and Agricultural Program Tour. And that event is open to the community if anyone's interested. I'll post it on my social media. We have an amazing FFA program at Escondido High School and I'm also a proud alum. Let's see, and then also we have next Friday, because we don't have a meeting next week because of the Memorial Day holiday. Next Friday, Musica en la Plaza. So remember that we have that free community event. It's always a fun event. And yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, last week I had the opportunity to play in a golf tournament for Heart of Compassion, which is a nonprofit providing outreach, food, clothing and other essentials to families in need within our community. It was kind of cool. I got partnered with a man named Andre Reed, who played for the Buffalo Bills. He's a four-time Super Bowl player, unfortunately not winner. But it was still a ton of fun. It was great to see so many local members of the community out there supporting that organization. Also went to the street fair. I had lunch with Nita Gaddy, who is the mall manager. And we took the time to walk the entire mall and go over some of the exciting things like round one and Kids Empire and other things that are coming to the mall. And I, I was asking her about, I don't know if capacity is the right word, but when she got there, it was at about sixty percent full and now it's just over ninety percent. So kudos to them. The mall's a pop in place. We go there a couple of times a month and that's where I get all the cool shoes you see me wearing. We had a housing subcommittee meeting yesterday where we recommended bringing a, an affordable housing trust fund policy that you will see come to the city council very soon. Joe mentioned the Stephen Cade giveaway, which was a lot of fun. Last but not least, I have here a notice of intent for a public hearing for I-5 SR seventy-eight Managed Lanes Connector and Woodland Interchange Project. And if you would like to learn more, you can attend the meeting or the public hearing at the City of San Marcos, Three Civic Center Drive on June fifth, twenty twenty-five, from six to seven thirty PM. And that concludes my report. City manager?
Nothing to report.
Any other public comments?
None.
This meeting is adjourned.